Going to call the July 23rd, 2024 Council Meeting to Order at 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Myers.
Here.
DeShawn.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Moritz.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Me.
You have minutes from...
Mr. President.
It is on, but this red light is out, but it is on. Yes, Carolyn.
I have a parliamentary inquiry, please.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would like to ask for a parliamentary inquiry. I would like to ask for no public participation at tonight's meeting. As well as the public has the right to speak at the council meeting, I believe that Mrs. Slater is interfering with the work council has voted, was voted to do.
Okay, there's not going to be any noises from the audience because you can be removed from the council chambers for making noises and interrupting.
May I proceed?
Yes, you can.
In our package for tonight... Excuse me, I'm...
Okay, Carolyn, hold on. One more outburst. Continue.
In our packets for tonight, Mrs. Slater included five different cases concerning sex offenders. As I appreciate the information, council has not had any clear reason on why she is bringing this to tonight's meeting. I would also like to say that I personally feel that Mrs. Slater is causing havoc and just plainly taking council attention in unnecessary waters. Council has a job to do for the people, that is why we are here. As I know that our record requests are a privilege to the citizens, I also think that Mrs. Slater is making that privilege a nuisance. I respectfully am getting annoyed with them. And I didn't know how to explain how I felt about that, but I found this and I'd like to read it. A woman who completed high school and spends a lot of time on the Internet every day trying to sway the minds of anyone by posting incorrect, fear-mongering information about absolutely everything often wears a tinfoil hat. A person who stalks the comment section on social media platforms and harasses anyone with an opinion that could be perceived as different from their own. They're often entitled and speak down to others with a prominent self-righteous attitude. When cornered in an argument, they may resort to accusations of bigotry or assume the role of victim. My final thought is that I personally feel that all of the record requests and coming to the podium to speak is personally aimed at myself and another council member. I would like to ask Law Director, Mr. Gurnett, if I am within my right as a council member to ask for this inquiry without prejudice. Thank you, Carolyn Sherman.
So I suppose that if you wanted to suspend the rules, you could make a motion to suspend the rules. Public participation is part of the rules of council, so to dispense with that would be pursuant to a two-thirds vote by council.
Could we have that vote, please?
Somebody would need to make the motion and somebody would have to second the motion before a vote could happen.
Can I make that motion?
You can.
I make the motion to dismiss tonight's participation.
Does anybody have a second?
I have a question to that motion.
We wouldn't be able to have discussion on a motion until it is seconded.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Does the motion, you know, we have three public participations within our council agenda. Are we stating, is that motion making reference to all night?
All night, no participation, all night.
Okay. Okay, so then I would like to speak.
Yes, Vicki.
I would like to provide both the public and council background information on public participation. The Ohio Open Meetings Act sets forth that the public has the right to attend and hear what is going on at the meetings of a public body, which in this case is council. The Ohio Open Meetings Act does not provide or prohibit attendees or the public the right to be heard at meetings. Both the Rules of Procedure for Bussara City Council and Bussara's Codified Ordinance, Chapter 111, entitled Council Rules of Council, do allow public participation. Our Rules of Procedure for Bussara City Council state the following for citizen participation. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous or physically threatening to members of council, the administration, and others in attendance while addressing council or a committee, shall be forthwith by the presiding officer barred from further audience before council or a committee and can be removed from council chambers. Our Rules of Procedure state the following for council participation. Any council member or city officer making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, or who shall become boisterous or physically threatening to other members of council, the administration, and members of the public in attendance shall be forthwith by the presiding officer barred from further attendance before council or a committee and can be removed from council chambers. Our Rules of Procedure state that if any speaker/visitor in speaking or otherwise shall violate any rules of council, the presiding officer or any council member or committee member shall call them to order. The presiding officer upon hearing an explanation from the speaker/visitor must decide on the point of order. If the decision shall be in favor of the speaker called to order while speaking, they shall be at liberty to proceed; otherwise, they shall not be at liberty to proceed with their speech. The definition of a personal remark is an intentionally offensive remark about someone's character or appearance. The definition of an impertinent remark is rude, disrespectful, or inappropriate in both behavior or speech. The definition of a slanderous remark is the utterance of false charges or misrepresentations which defame and damage another's reputation. I have always been a vocal advocate for public participation at both council and committee meetings. However, I do not, cannot, and will not condone personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, whether they be from the public or from council. As I sit here before both the public and council, I personally plead that we all act as respectful adults, not only tonight, but going forward. With that being said, I will be voting against the motion that public participation be removed from tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion before we have a roll call vote? Mr. Moritz?
I'd just like to state, I haven't participated in any of the social media stuff that I've seen out there and tried to go a couple times when I've been asked to. It's just off the wall crazy. We just went through July 13th at 6:11 PM. We've seen what happened there from social media and media alike pushing agendas, trying to get people riled up. That kind of thing can't keep happening. We need to really watch what we as public and council alike are doing on social media sites.
Mr. President.
Yes, Carolyn.
If I'm not mistaken, right now on Facebook, there is two petitions going out by Brittany Wireball and I forget who the other one is, to have council vote me out. And for these people that are here tonight, they were asked to come here in one of the petitions to give their reasons to council why I should be made to resign from council. Just so you know.
James, did you have something you thought I seen your finger go up?
No, I was pointing at Chris. You were looking at me.
Okay, is there any other discussion before we have the roll call vote? Okay, we will proceed with the roll call vote.
Myers.
Hell, no.
DeShawn.
No.
Sherman.
Absolutely.
Moritz.
No.
Sherrick.
No.
Hickman.
Absolutely not.
Me.
No.
Okay, so there was a one yes vote and a six no vote, so the motion fails. And we will proceed with the agenda, which is minutes from the July 9th, 2024 regular council meeting. Does anybody want, have any questions on those minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this present. I think a second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded on favor.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Granting permission for visitors to speak. We had the zoning admin, or yeah, the zoning administrator wanted to address something here at the beginning of the meeting.
Mike Keith, the zoning administrator, like to point out a public notice that is posted currently for signs that are within the public right-of-way will be removed the day after Labor Day. That includes business signs, landscape signs, Internet signs on telephone poles. These all fall under the zoning code for no signs to be in the public right-of-way on public lands and government properties. So if anybody has any signs out, then they'd be removed by Labor Day. After that, they will be deposited in the barn in the back, and they will be there for two weeks. After that time, they will either be in the recycling bin or out at the landfill. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Myers?
After that date, if somebody places one on September 3rd, is there a length of time before, is it immediately removed?
They'll be removed.
Okay, and who is taking care of doing that? Who's responsibility?
Removing? Yeah. I am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Vicki?
It's probably a no-brainer, but if an individual takes the sign and moves it so that it's not in the public right-of-way...
It has to be behind the sidewalk, so then it's on private property. So as long as it's outside of the sidewalks on private property, the signs are fine.
And for those residences that do not have sidewalks?
Then there won't be any, you can't have signs in the public right-of-way. So for the houses that the porches are right on the face of the sidewalk, then technically, I guess that you could have them against the porch, but it can't be in the right-of-way. Most of the right-of-ways are either at the back of the sidewalk or within a foot or two from the back of the sidewalk, depending on what street you're on. Because the right-of-ways vary in town. It depends on if you're on a side street, alley, or the state route. Sandusky Street is, I do believe, a 99-foot right-of-way, and most of the right-of-ways in town are anywhere from 33 feet up to 50 or 60 feet right-of-way. Usually it's on the backside of the sidewalks.
So this pertains also to real estate agents that are putting for sale signs?
Those are supposed to be out of the right-of-way.
Okay.
That's, it's under the code. Real estate signs are supposed to be out of the right-of-way.
I'm wondering for...
Same goes for campaign signs.
Okay.
They have to be out of the right-of-way.
I'm wondering for communication purposes, if maybe a copy of this might be dropped off, mailed, or to save money, emailed to the various, at least I'm thinking the real estate people, so that they know. And I mean, I don't, I understand what you're doing here. I'm just thinking if I was a real estate agent and I didn't happen to know that this public notice was out there and all of a sudden, well, if I was a person that was selling my house and my Realtor sign was missing, or my own personal for-sale sign was missing, I probably wouldn't be a happy camper because I didn't realize. And again, it's just...
But also, it's part of, I mean, if you're selling real estate, you should know that your signs aren't allowed in the public right-of-way. So that's part of them having the licensure just out of real estate. They should know those requirements.
Okay, since I'm the one that brought it up, I mean, I would be happy to take care of doing that, to eliminate extra work for the zoning office. I don't know, me just personally. Where is this being posted?
Right now, it is on the city website. It's on, right now on the zoning and engineering Facebook page. I do believe it's on the city Facebook page right now, and I want to send this to Crawford County now, I believe. So, and then I'll make a note of sending it out to the real estate companies.
And like to say, if you need any help on...
All right.
I commend the job we're doing here, but I would like to refer this to plating because I think some discussion needs to be had, maybe, and this is just my reasoning for referring it, maybe the plating committee looks at it and says 15 feet from a curb or 20 feet from a curb because like she, I know where she's coming from, there is areas like she doesn't have sidewalks. So I would like to refer it to plating for further discussion to help the public, you know, like you mentioned that there's, different roads have different right-of-ways.
Is there a second on the referral?
I'll second.
Mr. Hickman seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Any other questions for the zoning, oh Vicki?
Well, just a comment. Mike, have you already sent out, well, this is probably posted right now on... So is that going to be an issue if this is...
No.
Okay, okay.
I just think it needs some further discussion.
Gotcha, okay.
Clarification that he will make his job easier.
Okay, okey-dokey. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, we also had a David John III.
President.
Here. City Council.
I'm not going to take too much time because I know you gentlemen and ladies have a lot of work to do and issues to take care of.
Huh? Could you state your address for the record?
541 Sosandusky Avenue. I've been living in the same place for about 35 years, so. Anyways, the reason why I'm here is because I believe the message I want to get across is about prayer to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and our God. I believe if we, I talked to, I talked to the mayor and I asked him if we could have a little time, about two to five minutes, and give thanks in that, praying for our community, praying for our city schools, praying for our police officers, praying for city council. As you, as you remember, we almost had a scare not too long ago when that tornado came on, okay? We need to come together as a city and as a people because we need a higher power right now. Not only for our city, but for our nation and the world. Because we've got a lot of issues that we need to, that we need to address within ourselves and as a people. Because each and every one of us has a responsibility to ourselves, to our families, and to our loved ones, and to our children and great-grandchildren. And these people are right here. Each and every one of us has a life. Who gave us that life? The Lord Jesus Christ and God. And Christ paid a heavy price for it. I'm not here to preach to you. I'm just here to ask, do you think it would be appropriate to give two to five minutes to our Lord and Savior? He is not asking for too much. He's just asking you to bow your head and to give Him the love and respect that He deserves. He paid a heavy price for you, all of us, around the world and for every generation from then and back. We're right here at this time, at this moment, and our nation and the world is in trouble. I'm not going into politics, Mayor. I'm just stating the facts. We need our Heavenly Father and the Lord Jesus Christ of Heaven, okay? But it takes you as a people to bow your heads just two to five minutes to make a difference for our kids, for our community, and for the United States of America. You know what you need to do. Please, let's get it done. Because I guarantee you, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm not being, I'm not being mean and I'm not being disrespectful. We have a very short amount of time before this world is no more. And you guys know it and I know it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President, I'd like to let Mr. John know that our Order of Business under Chapter 111, which is our Council Rules of Council, on our agenda, we do have invocation. And there was a time that, you know, we would have different pastors, ministers, you know, come. I will say this. When they came and did a prayer, it was short, and it was just basically, you know, watch over council, you know, watch over the city, didn't go into, I guess what I'm saying is, I think five minutes might be just a little too long.
I'm not saying that, ma'am.
Well, you had mentioned two to five minutes.
Yeah, but I was going by the mayor's, the mayor's whatchamacallit, because I know that, I know that time is precious in our lives, okay? I know that. But what I'm saying is, okay, God made us. He made each and every one of us as human beings, okay? He gave us these lives that we live right now, okay? I'm not saying that we need to, you know, to take, you know, I know life, life is short. I mean, everybody's got responsibilities in their life that they have to take care of, okay? But all I'm saying is, give that moment of Him to Him. That's what you call respect. That's what you call giving back to someone who created you, who loves you, who sacrificed Himself so that you could be sitting in that seat right now. No disrespect, okay? Because we are living, okay, on borrowed time, sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I want you to take your time off. We are living on borrowed time, okay? And you know it and I know it, that sooner or later, okay, we're going to be biting the dust. And I don't mean to be negative. I'm just stating facts.
And I don't need to, need to be negative, but this is something that I personally, I don't know how the rest of council feels. I don't want to get into the talking and talking, and that's where, I have no problem because again, it's on our agenda. But as you indicated, you weren't here to preach, and that's why I'm saying, you know, just a two-minute, if even a two-minute, just a basic prayer, you know, to, again, watch over council, you know, as they make decisions, you know, pray for the city, just a short, sweet, simple, and sometimes just short, sweet, and simple can say it all.
Ma'am, if we can, if we can stand up for the American flag and give our recounts of the United States of America in that, two minutes is not going to hurt us.
Okay. Mr. President.
Yes, Carolyn.
I'm sorry, but I'm going to disagree with Ms. DeShawn for this reason. All public speakers have five minutes. That's the rule. What right does council have to categorize what they can talk about for two minutes or five minutes? If he wants to talk about religion for five minutes, he's coming here as a public speaker. The floor is his.
But it's not under public participation.
Only we don't take it away from him.
It's under invocation.
Mr. Myers, you're, you know what, Kurt? I think you need to bring it to order. Bring it to order.
Everybody.
Bring it to order.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
I put the invocation on, in 2020, when I was council president, then I started putting it on the agenda, and then at some point it got removed. There was a, I think there was a shortage of finding pastors to come in. And then, and then the council put it in their rules here, I think possibly very recently.
No, that was put in September 1, 20.
It was put in in 20?
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm just saying, Mr. President, all I'm saying is, is all we, just do is just bow our heads, pray in our office, or just pray for each other as human beings, that's all. I'm not asking for informality. I'm just saying, can't you take the time to just pray for each other, pray for family? Pray in your office, you know? It's not, I, I'm not putting it as a policy. I'm just saying, give the respect and love that He, that He deserves. That's all. I'm not saying that you have to make informality out of, or of a public, you know, whatchamacallit, you know? That's what we need to do. This is not, we shouldn't be bickering over this or anything else. This is just about giving back to our Lord and Savior and the Holy Kingdom of God. That's it.
Well then, Mr. President, I apologize then to Mr. John. I took it that he was asking for prayer to be done at each council meeting, and so, so I apologize.
I mean, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, and people of Bussiris, this is, this is about us as human beings, as people, okay? We can make our, we can make Bussiris, our Bussiris, our, singing Bussiris is great right now because we've taken the time and changed it, and it's beautiful, our rooms, everything. But what we need to do is, we need to come together as a people for our children's sake, for our grandchildren's sake, okay? Because if we pray for each other, okay, that strengthens the city of Bussiris. Our police officers, our firefighters, our nurses, our doctors, everyone. That's what we need to do, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Green, I agree with you on all of that. But we have gone over the five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me, sir. I didn't mean to go with the five minutes. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, City Council. But anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And have a nice evening.
Any other public participation? Please come to the podium.
Mary Frye, 506 Gay Street, and I'm here for a safety concern. The neighbor at 502 Gay Street still has not fixed a sidewalk from the tornado. It was in two big pieces of sandstone, which now I'm watching kids come down, pick it up, move it, bust it. It's now in pieces, and that is the main sidewalk to the park, which every night I sit outside, watch them go down to the park. Little kids have to go out in the street, strollers, they all have to go out in the street to get around down to the park. If city council could send... If City Council could send him a letter, I don't know how you do that, send him a letter or give him so much time to fix it? If not, can you guys fix it and send him a bill?
Is this the same sidewalk that we have in committee right now?
This is, this issue is already in committee.
The sidewalk?
That particular sidewalk at that location is already in committee.
Okay, and thank you for fixing the stump. Perfect. That was great. Okay, so that's.
Well, if you, if it's still in the open projects, I mean, you could come on Thursday, and.
Pardon me?
It's still in the open projects, you could come on Thursday and be involved in the, the committee discussion related to that sidewalk.
Thursday at what time?
Six.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4. First want to thank the council for allowing me to speak today, and for, and thank you for maintaining the right to do so. That does mean a lot that I can still come up here and voice my opinion. I was first going to ask where, voice my displeasure of how it was handled that I asked for time to speak today, especially when I told, I was going to be limited to five minutes, which is fine, I know that's the rule. But a follow-up to that, when the email was received that stated that it was going to be removed altogether, I feel like that was very inappropriate, no matter what I had to say. It's, it's a public opinion, we're allowed to come up here and voice that. And I think if you make one exception for one person, just because you don't like their opinion or what they have to say, then that is just weaponizing the position that you are in to, to prevent someone from speaking their mind. So I feel like that's very inappropriate. But I am going to pass on giving my full, my full opinion on that matter and go on to why I came here today. First of all, this actually was brought up to me during the Crawford County Antique Farm Equipment Show. I had a craft show there, and during the craft show, there was a family day, which had like a bouncy house and things for kids. And I was with someone, and they pointed out that they knew that a person there was a sex offender that was on the registry, lived in her neighborhood, and knew that the offender, offender's victim was a child. And she was like, I didn't think he was allowed to be here, and I didn't really think much about it, didn't get a chance to really look into it further, but here to find out, there's nothing in our local ordinances that say that an individual who is a registered felonious sex offender is not allowed to be in public areas such as that. So I do know that the Ohio Revised Code only states that sex offenders must stay in residence 1,000 feet from any childcare facility or school. That is the only thing that is listed, and in my opinion, that is insufficient, because there's plenty of places that children congregate outside of those two locations. So it makes no prohibition for child sex offenders from attending school events, going to public parks and pools and playgrounds, and in, and attending events intended for children and families. I feel that this is not a complex issue to decide or debate. I feel like we all want best for our children and our young people in Bucyrus. And because of this, I will wait for a further, I'll wait to give my further and full opinion. At this time, I do ask the council to please refer this to Health and Safety Committee. That's all I have on that matter. However, I do think, I have one last parting note. Carolyn, I'm very disappointed that you talked about bringing up.
I don't want you talking about me here, Council.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry, this is, this is public participation, and it's my right to speak.
Then leave me out of it.
I am, no, ma'am, it is my right to speak. I let you say what you had to say about me, it is my turn.
Okay, okay.
I am very disappointed that you have been calling me.
Carolyn.
Point of order.
No.
Mr. Myers, point of order.
Carolyn, can you please let Mrs. Slater continue her speech?
I'm about to tell a story that I promised I would not tell about this sex offender stuff.
Carolyn.
I'm tired of hearing it. I'm about to tell a story.
Carolyn, please.
There is no point of order.
Let's let Mrs. Slater, let's let Mrs. Slater continue.
Then I will have a follow-up, sir.
You can continue, Mrs. Slater.
Yeah, give me just one second, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to cover myself. As I stated in my email, you have a right to have opinion about me. You can dislike my opinions, but you are held to a higher standard because you are a council member. You are held to a higher standard. You're supposed to listen.
Point of order.
Carolyn.
Mr. President, I ask you to do your job and have her removed after this many mornings.
Okay, I can't remove a council member, but y'all could have a vote to remove one of your own members. If you want to have a vote to remove a member from this meeting or violating the rules, I think that is a two-thirds vote. Is that right, Mr. Gerner?
Yes, so moved.
I'll second that.
We would need a roll call vote for that.
Good. Myers?
Yes.
DeShawn?
Yes.
Sherman?
No.
Moritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gerner, how do we proceed here? We have six yes votes and one no vote.
Right. Oh.
Can I come up and do a public as a citizen? No. Then I suggest, I'm asking, don't. If I have to leave, I'm going to say my final thing. Somebody needs to bring up the situation with the pool and child molesting accusations and a lawsuit I could have had on the city a month ago with no proof, just like you. You guys came here, you didn't want to go. He's standing back there laughing at me. Y'all gonna let him do this? They come here for that purpose.
We're going to go into a recess at 7:37.
I'll be back. You're not.
Okay, we are back from pub, our recess at 7:39 PM. Continuing with public participation, Mrs. Slater, did you want to continue? I know you were interrupted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fankhouser.
I believe you might have about a minute left.
I will always respect your position. However, I can disagree with an opinion, and I do appreciate that you took the time to listen to what I had to say. And I would like to say I'm very disappointed on how things went this effort, or this evening with Carolyn, but I do appreciate this council for doing the right thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public participation? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, we're going to move on to communications and petitions, and we have a letter from a Jennifer DeKaiser dated 7/12/2024, and a council clerk is going to read that letter.
This is from Jennifer DeKaiser from 318 West Warren Street, Bucyrus, Ohio. Good afternoon, City Council. I'm writing on behalf of many people in Bucyrus that are fed up with the excessive use of recreational fireworks in city limits. My Aunt Judy Widman and I are considering getting a petition started to banning recreational fireworks in our city limits due to animal cruelty that is going on from the constant blasts, war veterans that could be suffering from PTSD, and special needs kids that are epileptic, epileptic and are suffering from irresponsible people setting them off all day and night. People are, people with serious health issues like my Aunt Kathy Widman with a peacemaker, with a pacemaker, or people that have had strokes or a history of stress-related autoimmune issues are being affected by people abusing the legalized fireworks. Even when I went to Ken Brothers at 3:30 PM one afternoon, someone was setting off fireworks and crackers on the curb right by the street. This could cause someone to have a heart attack or stroke while they are driving. The majority of setting off the fireworks do not realize that the Ohio law reserves them for specific dates and times, and they are also setting them off on public property like school, parking lots, churches, and on the streets when people are driving. Many people are intoxicated and setting them off in front of their little children, which is extremely dangerous. On June 20th at 1:30 PM in my neighborhood, 409 West Rensselaer Street, set off a huge firework, and my dog Basil lost control of his breathing and heart rate, and I was forced to drive clear to Lima to have him put down. I adopted Basil when I got out of the Marines because I knew my mental health was struggling. After 10 years of military service, Basil was my best friend. He's dead because of never-ending irresponsible behavior with fireworks in Bucyrus. The people at 409 West Rensselaer and the two houses next to it on Gray Street are also responsible for taking part of setting off fireworks nonstop. It wasn't until I got into an altercation with them after bringing my dog's ashes back home that I screamed at them for being irresponsible for my, for, I screamed at them for being responsible for my dog's death. The dog, the, the guy setting the fireworks off was drunk while setting them off in front of little toddlers and kids. This is against the law as well. Being intoxicated while setting off fireworks, no arrest, shocking, I know. Just tonight, I caught the people at 228 Wood Lawn using the church parking lot for setting the fireworks, and I'm almost positive that the mother was intoxicated, and the father had little children right next to him while setting them off. Last year, I caught people setting fireworks off in a parking lot next to the dollar store by the Warren Street Car Wash that's owned by my grandpa's nephew, Randy Lady. It's all illegal and no arrests or anything was done about it. The majority of people said, are setting them off all day and night with absolutely consideration for people that have, with pets that are scared to death of them. I unfortunately had to put my dog down who was suffering from Cushing's disease, and it was a nightmare trying to control his stress levels with medicine, physical therapy, and spending thousands of dollars getting hotels trying to drown out the noise with the constant blasts. We spent 120 to $400 on physical therapy, 100 to $200 a month on holistic calming and immune medicine, and $500 a month for raw, a raw food diet, which is a lot of money to keep my dog alive, battling Cushing's disease to be dead because everyone's happiness to set loud blasts and fireworks off all of the damn time is more important. Not to mention $655 to put him down and cremate him at a Lima Emergency Veterinary Clinic because emergency veterinarians don't exist anymore after my father, Dr. John L. Mahler, DMV, DVM, died in 2019. I also had to tolerate a lunatic on my street, Chris Massey, at the 406 of West Warren, setting off paint can bombs all hours and days of the night. This started in 2021, and the neighbor filed multiple police reports and then filed a formal complaint to the City Council and the county prosecutor. Nothing was done about this guy until I filed an FBI report, and then finally, he was arrested. Once he was, once he was released, he started setting off fireworks all the time in the street and then aiming at, aiming them at my house. Setting them off in the street is illegal, and I'm pretty sure the police department is not bothering to arrest anyone despite that. I had served in Iraq from 2003 to 2004 as a fuel tank hauler. I lived on Ballad Air Base Camp, Anaconda. It was known as Mortar Alley because it was one of the hardest attacked bases in the whole country. Bucyrus sounds worse than that. I would rather spend another tour in Iraq than live in a town with such inconsiderate behavior. I was lucky that I never had PTSD issues with fireworks because I only dealt with them one to two times a year with professionals running the show. Not irresponsible citizens that are intoxicated in front of their children and with people who do not give crap about people's pets running away or dying from the constant loud blasts. I now think I'm starting to suffer from PTSD because of the blast because it's all the damn time in Bucyrus. If nothing gets done on this issue, it's only a matter of time before a war veteran does lose their crap and someone dies from it. My physical health is struggling because of the stress of it. I've had 18 surgeries in 15 years from health issues from burn pit exposure in Iraq, and living in Bucyrus has made my mental and physical health even worse because of the irresponsible behavior of its citizens. I had to take my son to urgent care the other day, and the nurse on staff was afraid to leave her dog at home because it is so scared and traumatized from the loud blast going off through the day and night. If the city doesn't take, if the City Council doesn't take these issues seriously, then I'll be forced to take this to the state and federal level. Signed, Jennifer DeKaiser.
There was an attached video to that email, if anybody wants to get a hold of the council clerk.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to not only accept and file this, but also to forward it to the police chief and the law director. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Moritz seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't believe we have any other communications and petitions, so we're going to move on to standing committee reports. Plating Committee, Mr. May.
No report.
Any questions for Plating Committee Chair? Public Lands and Buildings Chair, Ms. Sherrick.
No report at this time.
Does anybody have any questions for Public Lands and Buildings Chair? Health and Safety Chair, Mrs. DeShawn.
No report at this time.
I have a question. What Ms. Slater had brought up with the rules, that was to go to Health and Safety, we never made a motion to go with that.
The rules.
For, for the parks and the schools.
Nobody made a motion.
That's what I just said, because it kind of got, so can I make a motion at this time to send that to Health and Safety? Is there any other group that needs to have that, Mr. Gerner?
Public Lands.
You could put it in Public Lands.
That's what I was saying, too. So if we, if I can make a motion to send what Ms. Slater had brought up, which is a public lands and buildings and Health and Safety, that'd be really good, because I've had several constituents ask me. Pedophiles being allowed at school programs and, because it's all, the only rules that are out there, other than what's in their individual paperwork from the court, is that they cannot live within 1,000 feet of a school. So we need to look at what the city itself allows with parks and things.
That includes sex offenders.
Yeah, that, that's the, the sex offenders. Sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
May I ask you a clarifying question? Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Myers.
Mrs. Slater had, I just want to verify, you had mentioned it was only sex offenders towards children. Is that what your request was, and that what this motion was, or is it all sex offenders? Just so that we don't have that question come back up later, which, what we're allowed, now allowed to discuss.
Yeah, I primarily was thinking of child sex offenders, but I mean, that if you want to send the whole thing, then we can have that discussion. I just didn't want to take any more additional time.
You can discuss that further at.
I was just curious, so we refer all?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Sorry, thanks.
Any other questions for Health and Safety Chair? Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Myers.
No report.
Any questions for Finance Committee Chair? Economic Development Chair, Mr. Hickman.
I have no report at this time.
Any questions for Economic and Development Chair? Service Committee Chair, Mr. Moritz.
Law Director and Administration is still working on what we have going on, so none at this time.
Any questions for the Service Committee Chair? Special Ad Hoc Committee Chair, Mrs. DeShawn.
The Special Ad Hoc Committee for Rules and Procedure for Bucyrus City Council, Bucyrus Codified Ordnance Chapters 111 and 113. We are still waiting on a revised draft of Proposed Ordinance Number 11-2024 from the, from the Law Director, and once that draft has been received, a special ad hoc meeting will then be scheduled to review and discuss. End of my report.
Any questions for the Special Ad Hoc Committee Chair? The other Special Ad Hoc Committee Chair, Mr. May.
No report.
Any questions for that committee? Traffic Commission, Mr. Maritrucha.
I have no report.
Any questions for Traffic Commission? You motion to accept committee reports collectively?
I have a motion.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Moritz made the motion, Mr. Hickman seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Report of City Officers, Maritrucha. Report of City Officers, Maritruka.
Uh, no report.
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor? Um, Safety Service Director, Mr. Starner.
I have no report this time.
Does anybody have any questions for the Safety Service Director? Law Director, Mr. Gerner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, first, today is Kaylee's birthday, so I think we should sing "Happy Birthday" after the meeting to her. Um, but then Mrs. Deschawn had asked me about 216 West Mary Street. Um, I know that he had been making some progress, and it appears that, uh, that has ceased and probably reverted back to the way it was. Uh, so Mr. Groves went out today and took some pictures, so I can take those to the court and try to get some additional—
Leverage.
—leverage.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Law Director? Um, Auditor's Report, is it—are you still being referred to as Ms. Lewis, or—
It doesn't matter. Um, no report.
Wow, what's that? Was that a birthday present from her?
Uh, any questions for the auditor? Treasurer's Report, we have one dated June 2024.
I'll move to accept and file.
I'll second that.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Police Chief's Report. You guys don't wanna give any report? Now, Fire Chief is present. Need a motion to accept all the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Visitor's Input Regarding Reports of Standing/Special Committees and of City Officers. Don't see any.
I have a question on what bit he was reading.
Please come to the podium, please come to the podium.
I don't know why you're bringing up that one. Gary Miller, in under Roger Street. When you were talking about calling to order, or someone, you know, gets out of order, whose job is it to call them to order? Is it any council member, or is it Kurt?
Kurt and also council members.
Because she was called to order three times and nothing was, you know, and nothing was done. I just wondered, is it your job to do it?
Well, Mr. Miller is the presiding person, so if it's the committee meeting, it would be the committee chair. If it's a council meeting and I'm here, it would be me.
Or whoever, you know, was sitting in for you if you weren't here.
Yeah, and so I can't ever remember a time when a sitting council member was removed from an open meeting like this, so I—I would say that something was done.
Well, it was after three or four caller orders, should've been—
Well, they gotta have three, you know, it's in the words.
They have to have three callerings.
And Kurt's defenseifying.
And it—it was a very fast situation.
Like he said, we—we don't experience this often, so I think we all were trying to figure it out as we go. I think this group did a good job doing that.
And Gary, I'm looking here for my paper, which I can't find offhand, but— Kevin wants to know, don't I have it memorized?
I'll do your homework.
Um, yeah, I—I did read that if any speaker or visitor in speaking or otherwise shall violate any rules of council, then the presiding officer or any council member or committee member shall call them to order. So—
Do you have any rules on social media as far as conduct?
Need to—
Can—you do that? Can you do that or not because First Amendment rights?
Slippery slope, man. It really is.
Right. I just wondered, 'cause there's some things that are on there that—
Well, that's why we started discussing the whole, um, censure thing, 'cause really you can't—
Right.
—oppress the free speech.
Exactly. But when slanderous stuff is said on there from someone in the council to someone else, is that—
I mean, the public censure would be the most that I believe that council could do.
Legally.
I mean, you can't stop somebody from saying things.
Right, unfortunately. Okay, thanks.
I have a question on that.
Yes, Ms. Sherrick.
Well, a lot of jobs, it's in the rules for the job that you can't do certain things online? Like teachers have a specific set of things that they are and are not allowed to do online? Would we be able to do something like that?
Answer to a boss, we—we answer to the public, and it gets different.
Slippery slope. Okay, I—where were we at? Consideration of Proposed Legislation for the First Time?
Right there.
You ready?
Yeah.
Proposed Ordinance 30-2024, it's fund creation. Amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, being the creation of an ODNR All Miller Walking Path Subparagraph, containing a lands and buildings category, containing a contractual services line item and a capital outlay line item, and declaring an emergency. Proposed Ordinance 31-2024, it's appropriations ordinance. Amending and supplementing Ordinance Number 50-2023, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2024, by appropriating from unappropriate FEMA 2023 539 North Lane Street funds, the sum of $450, see other uses line item within the general government category within the FEMA 2023, uh, 539 North Lane Street Subparagraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriate ODNR All Miller Walking Path funds, the—the sum of $382,000 to the capital outlay line item and $50,000 to the contractual services line item, with both offer said line items being within the lands and buildings category within the ODNR All Miller Walking Path Subparagraph and declaring an emergency.
You motion to accept as the first reading?
So moved. Outside.
Um—
Let Mr. Myers have a, and I'll take the second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that's been read for the first time. If you have any public comment, please come to the podium. Don't see any. Consideration of Proposed Legislation for the Final Time.
Proposed Ordinance 28-2024, it's amendments to Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1187.01D and Bussaras Codified Ordinance 1187.03A. Uh, it's an ordinance amending and supplementing Section 1187.01, entitled Accessory Buildings and/or Structures under Chapter 1187, entitled Additional Residential District Standards, under Title 11, entitled Additional Zoning Requirements, under Part 11, entitled Planning and Zoning Code, codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio, and amending and supplementing Section 1187.03, entitled Home Occupations, under, uh, Chapter 1187, entitled Additional Residential District Standards, under, uh, Title 11, entitled Additional Zoning Requirements, under Part 11, entitled Planning and Zoning Code, of the codified ordinances of the city of Bussaras, Ohio. Proposed Resolution 226-2024, it's the police and fire equipment levy, Part 2. A resolution determining to proceed to submit to the elections of the city of Bussaras the question of additional 3.25 mil tax levy for the purpose of, one, providing and maintaining fire apparatus, mechanical resuscitators, or other, uh, fire equipment and appliances, for the establishment and maintenance of lines or fire alarm communications, for the purchase of ambulance equipment, and for the provision of ambulance, paramedic, or other emergency medical services operated by a fire department or firefighting company, or for the payment of other related costs. And, two, providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, other equipment, and buildings used directly in the operation of a police department pursuant to Sections 5705.03 and 5705.19JJ of the Revised Code, and declaring an emergency.
You motion to accept as the final reading?
So moved. Second.
Um, this was first Ms. Sherrick, and the second was Mr. Myers. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now, I will say that this police and fire equipment levy, the only reason it's being on the agenda as an emergency, even though it has gone through three readings, is because there's a deadline with the Board of Elections, and if we don't pass it as an emergency, it'd be 30 days out before that passed resolution takes effect, and then it wouldn't be meeting the deadline, so—
But just another point, that even though it was prepared as an emergency, when we had its first reading, we did not pass it as an emergency, we—
We voted to hold it.
Right, so that way, allowing the public to have the ability to come and express any concerns or ask questions.
So, you know, basically, we're—we're trying to show the public that we're not rushing to put tax levies on. We're having three readings, giving the public's opportunity to come express their public participation on the proposed levy, so we're trying to be very transparent. Does anybody have any public participation on the final reading stuff? Okay, we don't see any. Referring back to originating committee, Proposed Ordinance 28-2024 is back to plating. Proposed Ordinance 30-2024 referred back to finance. Proposed Ordinance 31-2024 is referred back to finance. Proposed Resolution 226-2024 referred back to finance. Committee Report on Pending Legislation, Plating Committee.
Proposed Ordinance 28-2024, Amendment VCO 1187.01, VCO 1187.03, favorable.
Finance Committee.
Finance is favorable to Proposed Ordinance 30-2024, which is a fund creation. Finance is favorable to Proposed Ordinance 31-2024, which is appropriations, and finance is favorable to Proposed Resolution 226-2024, the police and fire equipment levy, Part
Further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of Proposed Ordinance 30-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
Shireman's absent. Maritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 30-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
Shireman's absent. Maritz?
Yes.
Proposed Ordinance Number 30-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of Proposed Ordinance 31-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Sherrick made the motion, Mr. Myers seconded.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Maritz?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
And Shireman is absent.
Ordinance Number 31-2024 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of Proposed Resolution 226-2024, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded it.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Maritz?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 226-2024?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Maritz?
Yes.
Proposed Resolution Number 226-2024 is duly adopted. Um, okay, so this one's up for final, so do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 28-2024?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded.
Myers?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
And Shireman is absent.
Ordinance 28-2024 is duly adopted. Old and unfinished business. Mrs. Deschawn.
Um, for the last couple meetings, um, I along with council have been thanking our local businesses and individuals for sponsoring free swim days at All Miller Park Pool. I would like to add to the list of free swim days that have occurred. We had a two-day sponsor, which was the American Legion Post 181. One-day sponsors, Baker's Pizza Sport Shack, Cruisin' Car Wash, DT Petroleum, Group of Citizens, which included Dave and Marcia Baker, Judy Close, BU, Carrie Hoard, city council members, Diana Kincaid, and anonymous donors, Herb and Doris Jones, Ken Brothers, First Federal Community Bank, Deshaun Beach and Deci Plaire Families, Renss Nest, and Bussaras Moose Lodge 669.
New and unfinished business.
Did you say old or new?
I said any—any old and unfinished business. I said any other.
Any other, okay, sorry.
I don't see any new and miscellaneous business. Mrs. Deschawn.
I, uh, move to refer the Rules of Procedure for Bussaras City Council, which were updated March 2024, to our Special Ad hoc Committee for Rules of Procedure for Bussaras City Council, Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapter 111, Council Rules of Council, and Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapter 113, Ordnances and Resolutions. And my purpose of asking for this referral is that since the Special Ad hoc Committee is currently reviewing our Proposed Ordinance Number 11-2024, uh, for possible changes to Bussaras Codified Ordinance Chapters 111, um, I would like the Rules of Procedure to also be in committee in the off chance that there are any proposed changes that may be need—that may need to be made to that document as well.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded, all in favor. All opposed? Other new and miscellaneous business. Okay, we—some things has come up immediately prior to this meeting, and I need a motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss the purchase of real property pursuant to a higher revised code 121.22G2.
Yeah, is it correct this time?
It's one, not two.
I will make a motion to enter into executive session, uh, to discuss the purchase of real property pursuant to a higher revised code 121.22G2. Make a second.
Okay, Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded. We will need a roll call vote.
Myers?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to go into executive session at 8:10 PM. Executive session.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Myers made the motion, Mr. Maritz seconded, need a roll call vote.
One second. Myers?
Yes.
Deshawn?
Yes.
Shireman is absent. Maritz?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Hickman?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 8—
17.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Myers.
I would like to make a motion for a referral to.
Public Lands.
Public Lands and Building and Finance?
And Finance.
Referral to Public Lands and Buildings and Finance for the purchase of property.
Need a second?
Second.
Mr. Myers made a motion, Ms. Sherrick seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Next on the agenda is the excusing of council members who are absent, so don't know if this was fully stated on the record, but one of the council members has left us in the middle of the meeting. It was around the time that we went into recess, so do we excuse them? What's our procedure here, Mr. Gerner?
I believe you could ask for a motion.
You could ask for a motion to have her excused or, or not?
Well, I think it would be proper to ask for a motion and then see what happens at that point.
Okay, Mr. Gerner had advised me to ask for a motion to excuse the excused council member who is Carolyn Shireman. I do not see any motions, so we're going to move on to referrals.
We have signs in the right of way to plating. Pedophiles in school programs, the health and safety in public lands and buildings,